Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting a Gierburg City Council order. Gentlemen, please call and roll.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Lebutis?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Mr. Blake?
Here.
We have nine in attendance this evening. If you'd please rise for the invocation. Mr. Blake, I believe you're going to introduce someone.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council. It's a pleasure to ask that Pastor Corbin Huffman come forward to the podium, sir. And he's from Life Change Church, and he's been at their current location for five years or so. And he's got a very energetic and thriving congregation up at Life Change Church, and I'm pleased to invite him tonight to lead us into the invocation. And feel free to say a few words and then lead us if you'd like.
Cool. Thank you for inviting me. Again, Pastor, Life Change Church services 9:00 and 10:30 on Sunday mornings. And would you just join with me in prayer. Dearly Father, we just thank you for everybody that's here, each family that's representing, represented the community here, each leader, God. And God, we just pray that you go before this meeting. God, we just ask that your presence be part of each step. God, we ask that your wisdom and your guidance, God, your discernment will be upon all the leaders up here. God, we pray that you'll give them clarity in decision-making. And God, we just thank you for them representing this community, and we thank you for this community that you've entrusted us with, God. And God, let us make decisions to help further your name, and, God, and to help better this community so that we can come together in unity and all. God, we love you and we thank you, and in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang?
I'd like to excuse, make a motion to excuse Mr. Barker.
Motion to excuse Mr. Barker by Mr. Lang. Second by Mr. Lebutis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If I hold the same sign, that passes. Thank you. Next, we have our minutes of our February 18, 2020 meetings. Our motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Lebutis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If I hold the same sign, that passes. We have four reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from capital improvements, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, under reports from city officials this evening, we have one from our tax administrator, Bob Clark-Jones, the income tax revenue reports for the periods ending January 31, 2020, and February 15, 2020. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. We have two letters under communications this evening, one from Fairfield Homes regarding Chillicothe Manor, the senior housing development on North 21st Street, the other from the Ohio EPA, notice of receipt of Clean Water Act, Section 401, application on North Fork Licking River. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Okay. Next on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. We're going to open this public hearing. Jennifer, would you please read the public hearing notice?
Notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council shall at a later date be determined and announced thereafter take action upon ordinance number 19-37. Said ordinance accepts a proposed amendment to the zoning map attached to ordinance 8-33A, which would allow the changing of the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 905 Hollander Street, City of Newark, Ohio, Licking County, from that of GO, General Office District, to MFR, Multi-Family Residence District.
We will be voting on this right after the public hearing, so if anyone's here to speak on that, this will be the time. If you just raise your hand, I'll have you come up. Would anyone like to speak for or against? Sir, if you'd just come up to the podium, just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is William Porter. I live at 758 Hollander Street, just about a half a block away from the property in question for the zoning change. You know, the first and foremost, I think, the problem I have with this zoning change is myself and some of my neighbors that were within 300 feet of the property were not notified by letter originally, so we were unable to make the first meeting. We've had a lot of crime in our neighborhood. We have, some of us have security cameras, we have videos. A lot of the crime, we can almost certainly trace back to the apartment buildings that already exist there. I understand, you know, one of the arguments is these are not apartment buildings, they're duplexes. Well, apartment buildings, duplexes, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of difference depending on who's living in them. I also understand these are not zoned as low-income duplexes. However, I do know that at any point in time, that could be changed. I've lived at my address for 33 years. I've invested a lot of money and time in my property. At my age now, I'm really not much interested in moving due to the crime that we've experienced from the existing tenants of the apartments that are on our street. I guess I would just ask that in making your decision tonight, you would put yourself in our shoes, in our neighborhood. You know, we've been there for a long time, and now we're probably, it's my understanding, there's 32 units with single and one and two-bedroom units. That would probably equate to at least 80 people, 80 new neighbors within a block of our house. If you could imagine where you currently live in your house to all of a sudden inherit 80 new neighbors, and those neighbors at any point, that could be changed to a lower income level and add to the crime that you already have in your neighborhood. So I have, thank you.
Thank you. I should have mentioned, Mr. Rhodes, head of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission did approve the zoning classification for 905 Hollander Street to be amended to multi-family residence district with certain screenings and buffers and cetera. So I should have mentioned that, sorry. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Now's the time. Ma'am?
My name is Julie Miracle-Graveley, and my husband and I live at 802 Hollander Street, which is the only house in between both apartment and the, both Goodwill folks. I can't tell you how many times I have called because people are down in our yard thinking, and they have stated, multiple people, multiple different times have stated, "Goodwill told us that that was part of the yard that we could use." Many times I've called the police, many, between us and the people that are living beside the people that are dealing drugs. My husband would leave for work at 3:00 in the morning, and there are backpacks and bikes going up and down the street. And I leave, at that point, I was leaving at like 4:30 in the morning, backpacks and bikes. And if at any point this could possibly be turned into low-income housing, you're killing us. You're killing the people that, my dad built that house, that was the first house my dad ever built for the family. And we're back there, and it has changed so drastically that I can't even express it unless it changed. You put potentially 80 people in my backyard. It is so busy now, so busy with the Grove. It is not the place it used to be. Now that we're having to put cameras out, I know you all wouldn't want to be there at all. You wouldn't want to have packages delivered, not knowing if they're going to be there. And I know that happens everywhere. But the fact that it's happening on Hollander Street, where kids used to be able to play, that's what that needs to be. It doesn't need to be more housing. It needs to be a play area for kids to go. So we're not learning how to deal drugs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against? Sir?
I have a few words. I have. I'm Frederick Brecht, 759 Hollander Street. I don't have a lot to say, but I just want you to be aware that this would profoundly change the nature of our neighborhood, and I want each of you to think how much you would enjoy having this in your backyard. 30 new automobiles on your quiet little residential street every morning and every evening. And I would like to point out that single-bedroom units are not family dwellings. Okay? So, want you to keep that in mind when you take your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against?
Justin Thomas, 766 Hollander Street. Found out about this meeting from my neighbors because I never received any type of information on it, and I'm well within sight that 300 meters, or 300 feet, that needs to be. I've lived here for three years now. I've met all my neighbors, and all of them have lived here much longer than I have. In the three years that I've lived there, I've had my car broken into twice, I've had multiple packages stolen off my front yard. I've used the cameras that my neighbors have installed to see what's going on. I'm looking at installing my own cameras. It seems like right now adding a place like that, that is going to add multiple people into our neighborhood. We don't have the street surface right now to take up the traffic. I mean, traffic alone, getting in and out of my driveway at certain parts of the day, can be outrageous. And I normally back my car in to my garage, so I normally stop and back up. I've actually had to pull in, wait for traffic to dissipate, so I can pull back out, turn around and back my car in. We're looking at a situation where people that have lived there for 30-plus years and more are now thinking of leaving the area because this is going to create more crime, more drugs. We have a stop sign that sits right down, not 100 feet from my house, that I can sit on my front porch any given day of the summer and watch people running. Or watch people pull up to it and decide that's a great place to spend their tires. I'm a car guy. I love that type of stuff, but I really don't want it in front of my house. And if we're looking at this, I'm looking, thinking, you know, what is this going to create if I ever decide to resell my house? You know, I'm looking at, I've been revamping my house and redoing it, thinking, hey, I'm in a great neighborhood, I've got great neighbors. Now I'm hearing there's going to be an apartment complex right down the street that is, at any given time, could be turned into low-income apartments. And what she is saying, watching bikes and backpacks, you can watch it any day of the week. And it's sort of funny, you can be at 3:00 in the morning, watch somebody go down the street with an empty backpack. Later that afternoon, they're coming back down the street, and you see things sitting in their backpack that wasn't there before. I don't know what they're doing or where they're getting that, so I'm not making any conclusions. But it worries me for the safety of me, my wife, my son, you know, anybody that lives on that street, of what this is going to create and what this is going to develop in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against? One more time, anyone else for or against? Last time, anyone else for or against? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Zoning issues are the toughest thing for council to handle. I'll say aye, we'll at least say aye. Jennifer, would you read 19-37 for the second time?
Ordinance 19-37 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Lebutis, Mr. Marmee, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 905 Hollander Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office District, to MFR, Multi-Family Residence District, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Mr. Sassen, let me make sure I'm right. Since this is a planning commission and they have approved this, it will take six votes to pass it and seven votes for no?
That's correct.
Thank you. Or if it doesn't get six?
Correct.
Yes. You've heard your second reading of 19-37. What did you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
I give a motion to adopt 19-37.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 19-37?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
I appreciate you guys coming forward and talking and giving us your opinion. I know the Planning Commission did an extensive research on this area, and they're recommending that, and we generally go with their recommendation. I do know it's going to be a decent development. I do know that it is going to be fair market value priced as far as rents go, so it's not a low-rent district. Just have a hard time assuming that because you have apartments in one place that produce crime, that all apartments produce crime. That's not necessarily the case. Right now, it's just an empty lot. It would be great to make that a play area for the kids. Unfortunately, that doesn't generate revenue. So there is an actual owner of this property. It's not the city, it's not us, and this is a way for them to use this for a business. It is now classified as general business, which means there could be almost anything that moves in there that we would have absolutely no control over and no say over. As it is now, they're going to do a multimillion-dollar investment in the neighborhood and the property. I think it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood. I hope it is. So with that, I would recommend that everybody pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Any other discussion on 19-37?
Mr. President.
Mr. Fennell?
So I have given this a lot of thought. William and I have spoke quite a bit, and I've been contacted by other constituents as well. And so this has been a very difficult, you know, piece for me to really look at. I understand your concerns, and I understand that this is, in many ways, a gamble, potentially, in your minds for whether or not this development will or will not be good for your neighborhood. And I do applaud all of you coming tonight and speaking about that. I have spoken with individuals, and I do believe that this will not damage your neighborhood, it will change it. But I believe that it will help eventually, and it will make your, it will change your neighborhood, but I don't think it's going to damage your property values because it is an investment in your neighborhood. And I don't think that these housing units specifically will be necessarily bringing in people who you've been having trouble with in your neighborhood as well. And if you do have trouble, please, that's what we're here for, contact us as well. Thank you.
Mr. Marmee?
Hey, Mr. President. The Ohio Revised Code is very specific on what we can and can't do when it comes to zoning changes. There are some different things that go into play as far as you cannot spot zone and things like that. Property owner rights are very, very important in the state of Ohio and the city of Newark. Your property owner rights are very important. What you have as far as your rights because you have ownership of your property is to your benefit. You can make changes, alterations to your house, you can do different things on your own property. This owner has property owner rights too, and therefore, we cannot just vote against something because we don't like what a property owner is going to do. If it conforms with our zoning codes and it matches up with the zoning that is surrounding it, and, you know, we have to deal with this all the time as far as, does it fit in with the zoning? And if the property owner is requesting it and it fits in, then it's hard for us to go against that. Now, if it's something that does not fit in, then of course, that's where we can say no, and usually the Planning Commission says no, if they're trying to put a commercial property right in the middle of a neighborhood or something like that, and what I mean, like an industrial-type property. So we have to be very careful in how we vote in our decisions, although, you know, we know that it's your neighborhood. There's things in my neighborhood that I don't like, but it's the law, and there's houses and different businesses in my neighborhood that are allowed because it's within the law. And so therefore, sometimes we just vote in order to make sure that we're abiding by the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else? Gentlemen, please call and roll. Vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Lebutis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
19-37 passes 9-0. I'm sure that's why you guys were here, so I'll give you a minute if you'd like to go, or you're welcome to stick around. That's a time for you to come up and give us a comment if you'd like. Again, this is not a debate with council, this is just an opportunity for you to be heard. If we have anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Anyone else this section? Okay.
Lost my audience. What'd I do?
They heard you were going to talk.
Something I did.
They heard you were going to talk.
I guess. Nancy Waylu, 7441 Stewart Road, Newark, Ohio. First off tonight, I'd like to thank a few council members this evening. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Fennell for coming out to the Newark Homeless Outreach last month in weather that was less than inviting. As I remember, it was cold and rainy, and more cold, and Mr. Fennell did a great job helping out, serving food, talking to all the folks that came down, and he helped us tear down the tent, which is always, for us less-than-tall people, a challenge when we get done. I think we saw about 50 people that day, maybe? And so, thank you, Mr. Fennell. I also want to thank Mr. Lang this evening. I believe it was late last summer, Mr. Lang donated a bicycle, he probably forgot, to the Newark Homeless Outreach. And I have stored that bike in my husband's garage, not my garage, waiting to give it to somebody who we know needed it really badly. I'm happy to report that last Saturday, a gentleman who recently got a new job and needed transportation, I brought the bike to the outreach and gave him the bike. The tires, my husband put a little bit of air in the tires, and we were good to go. So I want to thank you for that. You don't know how much that meant to that gentleman. Each week, the Newark Homeless Outreach serves low-income and unsheltered in our community. And each week, I walk away surprised at the need, as I think I talked to Mr. Fennell that day. I think last Saturday, we served over 70 people, and we had lots of donated food, including a gentleman from Granville who brought minestrone soup. And it was cold last Saturday, not as wet, but it was cold, which felt really good on a cold day. We went through two pots of soup, I think. I also wanted to let all of you know, if you hadn't heard, that last week, the Disciple Factory and the Crossroads Crusaders opened up a warming shelter for three nights in a row. The temperatures were low, plus we had precipitation, I think rain and snow, which makes it even more unbearable when you're out there. I'm part of the Warming Center Task Force. I came on board last April, because I, me and Linda Mossholder were the only two that can make the Friday morning 7:30 meetings, which aren't my favorite. And I wholly support what the task force is doing, and we're so thankful that not only the Disciple Factory and the Crossroads Crusaders, but to the Licking County Foundation, who is helping, we meet there, they're managing all the donations that are coming in. And I'm also thankful to the members of the task force who are, there's some grassroots people, but mostly social service agencies. Sean Grady from the Emergency Management is the chair of it, and we've done a lot of work this year, and I think there's more work to be done for next year to help serve the unsheltered when the weather turns cold, because I don't think we're going to, you know, I don't think everyone's going to be sheltered anytime soon. We have some wonderful, caring people in this community, we really do. With that said, I want to bring up a topic of hate speech. Last week, a friend of mine brought to me my attention a mailing she received from a political action committee, who was raising funds for a candidate running at the state level to represent this area. After reading through the mailer, I was appalled and disgusted at the language being used to raise money for this candidate. To my knowledge, the candidate has not renounced the mailer. All last week, I kept thinking about the words that were used in this mailer, because frankly, I'd never seen anything like it. Words like crazies, abomination, demented, and deviance. When we use hateful words in talking about a minority population, in this case, in this instance, the LGBTQ community, in order to further one's own agenda, then we all need to speak out against it and say we won't stand for it. We don't need this type of politics and hate speech in our community. There's enough going on in the world today. We don't need stuff like that. If we don't see ourselves as part of the group being negatively impacted, then we usually, it isn't on our radar. Doesn't affect me, why do I care? Well, I believe this is and should be on a lot of people's radar. According to an FBI report of 2018, of the hate crimes reported, nearly 19% stem from LGBTQ bias. It's appalling. It shouldn't be the job of those being victimized to point out this type of hate behavior. For me, there's no neutral space in this argument. There isn't. There's right and wrong, and this mailer was completely wrong. In 2016, most of you who are sitting up here passed legislation that prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. The vote on this legislation was unanimous, and I applaud you. I would urge everyone here tonight and others to stand up and say, "Our community will not stand for this type of hate speech from anybody, especially from someone who wants to represent us in Columbus at the State House," that we do not believe by passing this legislation in Newark that it created more activism, or that passing that legislation created special rights. It didn't create special rights. It didn't. Our country has a long history of bias against people in the minority, and it needs to stop, and we can do that here and now. Lastly, you might find this funny, but I follow Jay Hottinger on Facebook, and he always has his Jay's Jots of the day. Anyone else follow Jay? I'm sure you do. And I happened to look at it this morning, because I didn't know if I was going to come to council tonight. And I looked at it this morning, and Jay quoted Martin Luther King, and he wrote, "Our lives begin to end, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." I guess that was my sign to come to council tonight. Then Jay wrote, "Show up, stand up, speak up." So I'm going to challenge all of you to show up, stand up, and speak up when you see injustice and hate happening in our community. And I know we see it, but we have to speak up. Thank you.
You're right, that legislation was 10-0, and it was that everyone would be treated equally, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to speak for this section? Anyone else? Last chance.
I'm gonna keep it short. I wanted to thank Nancy for her words. When I saw the article and the advocate, I just couldn't believe it, that.
Give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Rochelle Voland Smith on Violet Court. So, anyway, I wanted to thank her for speaking up so beautifully. I couldn't do it as well. But I couldn't believe that a representative would come up with something like that. It was just galling and unbelievable that in our society that that would happen. And again, I couldn't say it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Did you have your hand up earlier, or did I just miss you?
Yeah. Daniel Crawford, one sixty-three South Second Street. I wasn't originally going to speak tonight. I was just gonna listen to everything, but after Nancy spoke, I felt compelled to. I've seen, I didn't get the mailer myself, but I have seen the ads on Facebook and stuff. And I'll just mention by name, you know, Mark Fraser, who used to obviously be on council, has been the target of these attacks. And I find it personally repulsive. You know, I ran, I guess, against him in 2015, and then again last year. But I've always considered him to be a genuinely good person, who will actually go out of his way to listen to people. Do I agree, did I agree with the way he was sent up to the state, to be state representative? No. But that doesn't mean that he's a bad person. Fact is, he made the right decision, as everyone who was up here did that day, standing up for equal rights, equal protection. And I, I've tried every time I see that disgusting ad come up on my Facebook feed, to try to respond and tell people like, "This is just wrong, period." You know, "We shouldn't tolerate this type of despicable rhetoric here in this area." It doesn't reflect well upon us on the national stage, let alone the state level. And I really hope that Mark nails a resounding victory on March seventeenth. I may not agree with all of his politics, but I know at least he will listen to people. And through what you see in these attacks on him, it shows at least his opponent will not be willing to listen to everyone, if we're led to believe, you know, that he truly believes in this disgusting stuff that he says about Mark. So, either way, I thank everyone who was up here who voted in favor of that legislation at the time. And once again, I hope Mark wins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinances on the second reading, twenty dash oh one.
Ordinance twenty dash one by Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Blake. And ordinance amending chapter two-ten of the codified ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio, to establish procedures for setting the compensation of elected officials.
You've heard the second reading of twenty dash oh one. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lang?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty dash zero one.
Motion by Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on twenty dash oh one?
I believe I showed this a month ago when Mr. Lang first brought the ordinance forward. I think it's just great common sense legislation. I applaud Mr. Lang for that. I would hope that we would vote in favor of it.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Next, we go to ordinances on the first reading, twenty dash ten.
Ordinance twenty dash ten by Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. And ordinance amending the senior automotive mechanic, equipment operator of the Department of Public Service, Division of Parks and Cemetery by creating a classification of grounds maintenance worker and setting the compensation therefor.
Twenty dash eleven will be held for two weeks for a second reading until March sixteenth. Next, we move on to twenty dash eleven.
Ordinance twenty dash eleven by Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. And ordinance amending the position, classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark, Department of Service, Division of Parks and Cemetery by creating a classification of grounds maintenance worker and setting the compensation therefor.
Twenty dash eleven will be held for two weeks until March sixteenth. Next, resolutions on the second reading, twenty dash oh six.
Resolution twenty dash six by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of twenty dash oh six. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash zero six.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on twenty dash oh six? Seeing none? Gentlemen, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash oh six passes nine zero. Next, we have on the second reading, twenty dash oh seven.
Resolution twenty dash seven by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the United States Department of Justice for fiscal year 2020 cops hiring program.
You've heard the second reading of twenty dash oh seven. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash oh seven.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Rath. Is there any discussion on twenty dash oh seven? Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to say that, you know, as I attend block watch meetings and talk to neighbors in my neighborhood and my ward, that, you know, crime and the drug addiction is still an issue, and things need to be addressed. And so, it's nice to see that we're going for these three positions for the police department, and just thankful that the legislation was brought forward, and that we eventually could get some more officers hired. And so, I appreciate this. Being forward. Thank you.
Mr. Blake, anyone else? Gentlemen, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash oh seven passes nine zero. Next, on the second reading, we move on to twenty dash oh eight.
Resolution twenty dash eight by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for an award in fiscal year 2020, 2021, funding under the Ohio EMS Training and Equipment Grant Program.
You've heard the second reading of twenty dash oh eight. What does you wish?
Mr. Bean?
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash zero eight.
Motion by Mr. Lang, or no, Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Rath. Is there any discussion on twenty dash oh eight? Seeing none, Jeffrey, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash oh eight passes nine zero. Next, on the second reading, we have twenty dash ten.
Resolution twenty dash ten by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of twenty dash ten. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lang?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash ten.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Is there any discussion on twenty dash ten? Seeing none, Jeffrey, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash oh ten passes nine zero. Now, we go to resolutions on the first reading, twenty dash eleven.
Resolution twenty dash eleven by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty dash eleven will be held for two weeks till March sixteenth for our next meeting. Next, we have twenty dash twelve.
Resolution twenty dash twelve by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution twenty dash one-two.
Motion to waive the two-day re-rule by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some payouts that we always expedite to make sure that we get the funds to the employees. And we also have another bill that's due that we have to expedite.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Jennifer, please call and roll the way the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash twelve passes nine zero. Still on the first reading, we have twenty dash thirteen.
Resolution twenty dash thirteen by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty dash thirteen will be held for two weeks. Our next meeting on March sixteenth. Next, we have twenty dash fourteen.
Resolution twenty dash fourteen by Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lang?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution twenty dash fourteen.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Lang?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so this is for some construction work that we're gonna be doing. We've got a grant that will cover a portion of it, but we need to front the nine thousand dollars, nine thousand nine hundred dollars upfront to pay for the construction, and then we'll get reimbursed on the back end.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Jennifer, please call and roll the way the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Two-day re-rule is waived. Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash fourteen.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Any other discussion on twenty dash fourteen? Seeing none, Jeffrey, please call and roll the vote.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash fourteen passes nine zero. And finally, this evening, we have twenty dash fifteen.
Resolution twenty dash fifteen by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to execute a cooperative construction agreement with the City of Heath, Ohio, for the paving of Blue Jay Road.
Mr. President? Mr. Rath? I'd make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule. Motion to waive the two-day re-rule by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang, Mr. Rath.
Yeah, we're doing this in conjunction with the City of Heath, as well as ODOT. And as always, ODOT has deadlines that we do need.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Jennifer, please call and roll the way the two-day re-rule.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Twenty dash fifteen passes nine zero. That's it for the legislation tonight. Thank you for your attention. Next, our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Okay. I want the law director to pass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor Hall?
I'd like to congratulate Nurkhi Girls Basketball Team on winning the district this past weekend. They've got, going into regionals now. And so, the Nurkhi Boys and Girls continue this week. They'll each have two games, and we wish the best of luck as they pursue postseason. Also, yesterday, attended an Eagle Scout induction ceremony in Troop Two, that's been in town for more than fifty years, had five scouts. They've become Eagle Scouts, which is quite, it takes a few years. It's a lot of work. And so, they had, they subrighted out in front of about a hundred and sixty people, probably, and did a nice job. So, I congratulate all those five young gentlemen that worked hard to get that designation, and that'll, which has to be done before their eighteen. And they had a nice job of thanking their parents, and all the other involved partners, and a few tiers, and all that other thing. So, it was all good stuff. So, I congratulate each of those for all their hard work. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fennell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nancy, I would like to thank you for coming out this evening. It was very, it was very cold, and it was very wet. And the tents did not help when you took them down. All the water got on you. But, you know, even, even after that, I mean, I was freezing after being out there, and all I could think of were the people that were still out on the street. So, it was, it was difficult. It was impactful. I do hope to join you again. And I also do appreciate you coming out and speaking up against hate speech in general. And the ordinance you spoke about while running for office is, there's a lot of things that go into deciding whether or not to run for office. The passing of that ordinance certainly was something that made me feel like I could be welcomed and have a voice here. And so, that is a big part of why I am sitting here today, and why I decided to run, is because I thought Newark was a place, and I believe it is a place, where anybody can be welcome, and everybody can be successful. So, I appreciate you speaking out against that. We must continue to speak out against that. So, thank you. I appreciate it very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Well said. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And Mr. Harris?
Don't forget to spring your clocks for this weekend. That's right, it is an hour. Was at the Quavis Pancake Breakfast Saturday. It was well-attended. It was busy. I got there at seven forty-five, about ten, and it was packed. And also, I want to thank Trinity for their Black History Program. Councilman Blake and Labutus were there. They both left early, and I stayed for the whole time. So, without a pass.
Okay. Well, Mr. Blake gets it going soon. Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank my colleagues for working with me to pass ordinance twenty dash zero one. You know, it was something that was on my mind after the last round of adjustments to salaries, and thought we could at least clear up our procedure for the future. So, thank you, everybody, for supporting that. Nancy, thank you for coming back and letting, letting me know about the bike. That was on my mind, only because you said you'd come back and let me know. Really excited that that was, the two did use, you know, and we made a purchase over the holidays and had an extra bike laying around. I thought the homeless outreach would be able to make good use of it, and you clearly have. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting, and I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. First off, I want to call a service committee meeting for the sixteenth. And I do want to let you know that Joe Eble will be coming to that service meeting, giving us an update on the, his health report for Licking County. It will be his final, as he is retiring. Congratulations to Joe. And one of the things that he is going to be updating us on will be, I'm sure, an in-depth report on the coronavirus. It's on, it's on everybody's mind right now. So, we'll be talking about that on the sixteenth, third committee meetings. Nancy, I just wanted to say, well said, very well said. And I appreciate everybody who talked to that topic. Not to mention the bigoted hypocrite's name, but bigoted hypocrite is an excellent name for him. So, we'll just leave it at that. I wanted to thank Mr. Rhodes. I understand that we are not going to have a dog park at Forey Park, which is okay, because now we're gonna have a dog park at Reddington Park, which is actually in the third ward. So, he is committed to doing that sometime early this spring. So, I look forward to seeing that and using that as well. I also wanted to thank Jonathan Lang, who organized the meeting this afternoon. That was attended by myself and Dee Hall, along with our law director, Doug Sassen, and our safety director, Steve Baum. We had a very in-depth conversation about sound ordinances, noise ordinances, rather, and things of that nature. I'm not sure that we solved any problems in the world, but it was a, I thought it was a good conversation. I thought it was a good conversation and a good start. So, with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say thank you to Pastor Huffman again for coming this evening and filling in to give our prayer, all of our praying for all of our people, and for our leadership, and doing what's best for the people of Newark. So, thank you for coming and taking time out of your evening. And I understand this is your first council meeting, so hopefully, look, we've got through almost forty minutes, so it's, it's okay timed, so it came okay. Secondly, I want to say...